Okay. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Coralville City Council to order. It's May 28, 2024. Could I have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Knudsen.
Here.
Volguzain.
Here.
Quinn.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Goodrich.
All council members, except Councilmember Goodrich, are present, as is the mayor, the city clerk, the city attorney, the city administrator, and several other staff in the audience. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Moved by Quinn. Could I get a second?
Second.
Second by Peterson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The agenda is approved. Okay. Onto the next item. I have a proclamation here for National Gun Violence Awareness Day. Whereas every day, 120 Americans are killed by gun violence, and more than 200 are shot and wounded, with an average of more than 48,000 gun homicides every year, and 26 times more likely to die by gun violence than people in other high-income countries. And whereas Iowa has an average of 332 gun deaths every year, with a rate of 10.3 deaths per 100,000 people, a crisis that costs the state $4.2 billion each year, of which 53 million is paid by taxpayers, Iowa has the 42nd highest rate of gun deaths in the U.S. And whereas gun violence prevention is more important than ever, as we see an increase in firearm homicides and non-fatal shootings across the country, and increased calls to suicide and domestic violence hotlines, and whereas gun-related deaths are disproportionately higher for African-American Iowans, and disparity for gun-related homicide is even greater, with 17.3 per 100,000 compared to 1.1 per 100,000 for Caucasians. And whereas in January 2013, Hadia Pendleton was tragically shot and killed at the age of 15, and on June 7, 2024, we recognize her 27th birthday. People all across the United States will recognize National Gun Violence Awareness Day and wear orange in tribute to Hadia and other victims of gun violence and the loved ones of those victims. And whereas Hadia's friends who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange, which was chosen because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods, and orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. And whereas we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence, and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership, to keep our families and communities safe. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Megan Foster, Mayor of the City of Coralville, proclaim June 7, 2024, as National Gun Violence Awareness Day in Coralville. Further, I encourage everyone to honor and remember all victims and survivors of gun violence, to support their local communities' efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence, and declare that we, as a country, must do more to end this public health crisis. Signed on this 28th day of May, 2024, Megan Foster, Mayor. Okay. There we go. And we have someone that is here to receive the proclamation. Please come to the microphone and state your name.
My name is Rachel Zimmerman. I'm the Johnson County Attorney, and I am, I also have Lieutenant Kyle Nicholson back here, who's a little shy tonight and not wearing orange. Thank you very much, Mayor Foster, for the proclamation. I'm here to represent the Johnson County Community Violence Intervention Program, which Jess Lang is the coordinator. She asked me to be here tonight just to thank Coralville for supporting the police department in helping with CBI. We are already intervening in gun violence all over Johnson County. It is a community-wide effort, not just with law enforcement, not just my office, but providers, healthcare workers, neighbors, people who have been in the justice system, with lived experience in the justice system. So we're just really proud to get this off the ground. It's been one year since Jess was hired, and we're really looking forward to doing more to prevent gun violence. And hopefully, everybody will wear orange next Friday. So, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Would you like to take a quick photo?
Yeah, that'd be great.
All right. Do short, just slide the chairs. All right. Thank you. There's the time to say thank you. Thank you, everyone. Next, we have community comments. This is a time for community members to speak to us about items that aren't on the agenda or items that are on the agenda but are not subject to a public hearing. Each speaker will have five minutes, and we do reserve the right to adjust both the individual comment time and the overall, the overall speaking time, based on the number of speakers or any accommodations that a speaker might need. So if there's anyone that would like to speak to us, step up. Yes, we have someone. State your name and sign in, please.
Signed in early because I knew the drill. My name's Mary McCann, and I actually live in Tiffin. I don't sleep in Coralville, but my life is lived here. So I would very much appreciate your advice. I did send you an email that hopefully everyone has received. You know my concerns about having a board of supervisors that overrides any city council's research decisions about their town's law enforcement contracts. The idea that the board of supervisors knows best what a town needs is the same mentality we see from Des Moines as they pass appalling, inhumane laws. Unfortunately, I haven't been able to meet with all of the mayors and city councils in Johnson County. However, I have shared the J E C C data documenting 11,000 to 12,000 911 calls and police actions taken every month on behalf of the people in Johnson County. Last week, knowing that I had not reached out to everyone, I did reach out to the Gazette with all the information you received from me. I was thanked, and it was passed off to an intern who was clearly, after about five minutes, I realized, one of Mandy Remington's supporters. When asked what I wanted from the Gazette, I said I wanted full disclosure regarding each candidate's policy plans for law enforcement expenditures. To that, I was told that I needed to submit quotes from the candidates. I responded that he needed to study the votes cast, not the quotes, from the board of supervisors who support Remington. I knew he was playing the same word shell game that the two seated supervisors played until they were elected. People who I admire, V. Fixmer-Oris and John Green, as candidates, never revealed that they were going to hammer away on law enforcement, contracts, budgets, and expenses. After that election, many of their Democrat supporters were stunned to see that their new supervisors took moves against law enforcement. Candidate Mandy Remington and her supporters are playing the same game by misleading Johnson County voters. They are using exactly, exactly, the denial strategy used by Trump's Supreme Court nominees. We all remember the nominees equivocating and then telling us and assuring the Senate and the American people, Roe is settled law. So those are things that, for me, to see happening within the Democratic Party is spiritually crushing. I, oof. Last week, I also submitted a question for League of Women Voters Forum. I wrote, "We already have two of five seated supervisors who vote no on law enforcement financials. Please tell us how you will vote on law enforcement's experiment, expenses, budgets, and contracts." Instead of asking my question, they merged it with another question that did not mention the current board's anti-police voting record. So at this point, I look at Johnson County's many unincorporated townspeople with sorrow. I feel as if I have let them down. One overworked data fact nerd doesn't have a clue at this late date how to reach voters with honest information. I'm a behind-the-scenes, quiet political person. I don't like the spotlight or having a party choose where I focus my political efforts. Yet, when I see and hear lies, I know something must be offered up. Apparently, in 2024, for some Johnson County supervisor candidates, making truthful statements about their policies just is not a priority. I was prideful to think that Democrats were above deceiving their constituents. Still, it's a lesson to see the media drop, duck, and cover when controversy arises. When I consider the threats and the divisions in our society now, showing a dismissive attitude toward law enforcement during this election year really, really stuns me, and I hope that all of you are fully aware of what we're dealing with. So again, I would appreciate any thoughts, ideas, and advice you have. I will be sitting here waiting until there's free time, or email me anytime. I am happy to talk with anyone, anywhere, and understand what I did wrong to not reach everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to us? Okay. All right. We will move on to the next agenda item, which is a public hearing for a fiscal year 2024 budget amendment. And this is to amend the FY '24 budget for revenues and expenditures, and this amendment needs to be filed with the state by May 31, 2024. So I'll now open the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak to us on this? Do we have any written comments?
No, Richard.
Okay. I'll close the public hearing, and we will consider the resolution.
Resolution approving an amendment to the fiscal year 2024 budget introduced for adoption by Councilmember Knudsen, seconded by.
Seconded.
Seconded by Quinn. Any questions or discussion? Do you have anything you want to share? Anne?
Can I see?
Yeah. Yeah. Hop on over to the.
Can I see it?
And we have our Director of Finance, Anne Hester, who is going to share some information with us.
We, we had several larger amendments this year, and so this overview, this summary, provides kind of the summary of these large amendments. So some of it has to do with capital projects, and we have several going on under the lead of the Engineering Department. Fifth Street water main improvements, final payment estimate, $110,000. Fifth Street improvements, progress billing, this is estimate for May and June, $710,000. Westland use central trunk sewer pay estimate, just under $800,000. Kent lift station, estimate $23,500. Oakdale Fosmain, estimate $20,000. Oakdale extension pay estimate, $300,000. And additionally, we included the amendment just under $4 million for progress billing through April.
What's that mean? Progress billing?
It means projects were not budgeted.
It would be those, several of those same projects that this is the pay.
All that you just goes add up to the three.
Yeah. It should be also noted that all eligible expenses, both for Westland, Central Trunks Sewer Phase 2, and Oakdale Fosmain, will be reimbursed from the sewer revenue loan proceeds that, by the end of June. Public safety. So public safety includes police, fire, animal control. So the majority of the amendments has to do with purchase of additional three police vehicles and a fire engine, second payment out of the reserves. It also includes accessories for the new police vehicles and workers' compensation insurance projected to be higher than budgeted. Community economic development, we included the amendment for projected TIF expenditures that were not budgeted. It includes a variety of various expenses from economic development agreements to rebates, legal maintenance utilities, just under, just under $7 million. Business enterprises. So the majority of expenses, expenditures for the amendment has to do with a hotel remodel, $6.4 million, and debt service. So debt service amendment includes the loan to Arinaco to finance the purchase of the field house, $9.7 million.
All right. Thank you for that overview. Really appreciate it. Do we have any other questions or comments on these amendments? Okay. Awesome. Could I have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Volguzain.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Knudsen. Aye.
The resolution is approved. All ayes with Goodrich absent. All right. Next item, we have a presentation from Kathy Hotson-Piller, and Kathy is the Chair of our Community Policing Advisory Board. And just want to give a little bit of background information before Kathy shares the information with her, or with us, sorry. So, like I said, Kathy is the Chair of our, our Police Advisory Board, and Kathy has been with the board since the very beginning. So you were one of the original members, and now you have elevated to the role of Chair. Yes, and she, I really appreciate her passion and her leadership. She's done a great job. And I really appreciate her bringing this information to us tonight to discuss. So one of the things that the board does is that they review the law enforcement data that we collect. And we started collecting that data, and just looking at it, just, you know, you know, looking at the traffic stop data, we've been doing that for, I think this is the third year. And the idea is that we're just, you know, taking a look at things and making sure everything is, everybody is doing a great job with interacting with the public during traffic stops, and that we're not disproportionate in, in who we stop. And so we have some data that we, we do need to discuss this evening, and Kathy can share that with us and maybe give us a little bit more information about what the board does as well.
Sure. So thank you very much for having me. The, as Mayor Foster said, the responsibilities of the policing, the Community Policing Advisory Board are helping people file complaints if they feel like they've been discriminated against by a police officer, recommending training opportunities to the police department, and finally reviewing traffic stop data, which is what I'm going to present to you tonight. Since the board has been formed, there have been no complaints filed against any officers. And if anyone wishes to file a complaint, there are forms available in City Hall throughout the city, or alternatively, we can help you file a complaint through the Office of Civil Rights. Police officers currently take a required implicit bias training course. However, Amy Gosnell, who is our representative from the NAACP, has been finding additional training opportunities for the police department. These include unconscious bias training and cultural humility training. I don't believe we've done any of that yet, but we are presenting that to Chief Crone. So the most recent traffic stop data is from fiscal year 2023, which is July 1 to June 30. Total traffic stops for that timeframe was 4,124. There were five primary zones that were analyzed. These were Boston Way, Fifth Street East, Fifth Street West, First Avenue, and Oakdale and 12th Avenue. And those were determined by the study person. I can get into more, if you have questions, let me know, because it's, I could tell you why those places were chosen, but if you want to know that. So index values are assigned to a level of concern. These are labeled as benign, monitor, or concerning. So the data showed an increase in disproportionate traffic stops for non-white drivers when compared to the data from 2021. This increased significantly for daytime stops and increased slightly for nighttime stops. However, these were still in the monitor range. Officers often use discretion when issuing citations to drivers who have been stopped. In fact, 86% of traffic stops did not lead to citations. However, people of color were 30% more likely to receive a citation at the traffic stop. Conversely, white drivers were 40% more likely to receive a warning. Reasons citations might be issued instead of warnings were if the driver was driving under suspension, driving under revocation, driving while barred, not having a license, or not having insurance. Finally, black and brown drivers were nine times more likely to be arrested during traffic stops. These arrests were all nondiscretionary, meaning the driver had a warrant, and therefore the officer was required by law to make an arrest. It is of note, too, that no officers had stop outcomes that were meaningfully more disproportionate than their peers. So there were no outlying officers in the study. So the Community Policing Advisory Board will be meeting Monday, June 24, at 6:00 p.m. here. So if anyone from the public would like to attend or have a conversation about the data, or offer suggestions to the board, we welcome your comments.
Awesome.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay.
I have, I have one comment, since I did sit on that board with you guys for a little while before getting elected to office. The, one of the things I found interesting was the 12th Avenue, Oakdale area, and why that would have been chose as a spot to watch.
So I'm gonna, that, that's what I was alluding to when I was babbling earlier. So the way the researcher chose the five locations, I'm just gonna read this right here. So he said, "It's better to take a random sample of intersections from areas where traffic and police traffic enforcement activity is heavier." So that's why they chose that location. I don't think anyone that lives in Coralville would ever choose that location.
Yeah, I find it interesting that there's a lot of activity there.
Right.
It just, it kind of baffles me.
Yes.
And that was one of the spots that was borderline, right?
It was actually way out of range, and it made no sense. So that particular intersection kind of skewed all the data, but, you know.
So what are some other questions? I think a couple of things that I really want noted, so that it's not misrepresented, the data about the arrests. Those are arrests that there is a warrant. These are not our officers.
Nondiscretionary.
Yes, this is a nondiscre, that is a nondiscretionary statistic, and I want to make that very clear.
Correct.
That I don't want it misrepresented, that our officers are disproportionately arresting people if there's no warrant. So these are, and they have to arrest.
Correct.
If there's an active warrant.
They are required.
Yes.
Yes.
So just a caveat on that. What are some other questions that folks might have?
If you exclude the nondiscretionary tickets or arrests, is it still disproportionate? The number, the percentage of tickets, the likelihood of getting ticketed if you're non-white versus white?
Yes, that was in the first statement I made about increased, the, there's an increase in disproportionate traffic stops for non-white drivers when compared to the data for 2021, which increased significantly for daytime stops and increased slightly for nighttime stops. That was not including nondiscretionary, because that's just.
Not just a stop.
That's just a citation. It's not an arrest. That was for citations. But there was.
I thought that was just for a stop.
That was stops, but then also people of color were issued 30, were 30% more likely to receive a citation at a stop, and white drivers were 40% more likely to receive a warning at that stop. The only arrest data is nondiscretionary. There was no arrest data that was at the officer's discretion.
Yes.
There we go.
So I think, Mike, what you're asking is, are you asking about, like, tickets? When you, I mean, what, what is, what are you, like, who gets a ticket versus?
Who gets a ticket? If you eliminate the nondiscretionary tickets, is there still that?
Yes.
But that's what she was, yes.
But what's, I think what's great is officers use a lot of discretion, because 86% of the stops did not result in a citation. So.
And if you think about over 4,000 traffic stops, that's only, I mean, that's a pretty small proportion.
It is, yes.
And I think what, what you were also, just to clarify, you were saying that the citations, where they all, where they have to, where they don't use discretion, those citations are the driving while barred, driving without insurance, they have to cite those.
I'm not, I think they are, yes.
Yes.
I'm not a police officer, so I don't know these things.
I would say revocation, suspensions, no license, those are automatic. I like Deborah.
No, you're correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I was, so.
Okay. Yeah. So if we're talking about things like a taillight out.
Yeah.
If we're talking about, you know, speeding, or, you know, some of the, because there's a variety of reasons why stops happen. So the, but the, the times when they are cited, when they can't use that discretion, is when it's one of those types of stops. Driving while barred, driving without insurance is another one, right?
Yeah, you're usually, yeah. I mean, that, I mean, I go to court, those are a lot of the citations that actually go to court, so.
There's not a whole heck of a lot of, I don't see many speeding cases coming to court. Those are mostly the citations that I see come through.
Yeah. Yeah. So do we want any other questions or comments?
I just remind everybody again that, and I remind the board of this, too, Coralville changes ordinances. We do not take anybody to jail for any simple misdemeanor charge. It was always a cite and release, so even shoplifting cases, we cite and release unless there's a warrant or anything else for their arrest, or, so our ordinances don't call for jail time for simple misdemeanors at all.
Yeah. I mean, I think that was one of the things, you know, in, in having a conver, you know, when Kathy, you know, reached out to me and said, "Hey, I think we should, you know, talk about this," that, one of the things that I, you know, learned a lot through various conversations is that our officers have a lot of discretion, and they often choose to not cite, I mean, when they, when there is that discretion. And I think that's something that is worth noting.
Definitely.
Yeah.
I'm curious about one thing, as far as like our data. How confident are we in our data with the, with the current provider that we're using? Do we feel like that is something that we're confident in, or that there might be some room at looking at somebody else to do that, that data recovery?
I would be open to someone else looking at the data.
Yeah, that's, and, and I, I know that there are other options out there, and that was something that, you know, we'd also discussed, is that some of the, the way that the data is collected is a little bit challenging, and perhaps some questions about how, how accurate it is just based on the method.
Right.
So this individual literally goes and sits at these intersections and, and watches.
It says, "Our traffic surveyors made more, made more than 65,500 observations throughout the city from January through November 2021. Observations were made at various times, seven days a week, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. during this timeframe." But what that means is observer was like, black driver, white driver, not sure what driver, not sure what driver, black dri, I mean, like, I don't know about you, but that's a little, so.
So where, where.
And Royce, you were there, I think.
That's how they get the denominator.
That's how they get, I think, the demographic norm for the, for the intersection.
For that intersection. The tickets, or the stops, would be documented by the police officer.
Correct. Yes. Yes.
So we have confidence in that data.
Yes.
It's just what's the denominator?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So they don't use census data, because his point was each area probably has different demographics, which, sure.
When we restarted this, the police, have they have a new protocol that records all this data that was used in the, so I, I believe that was pretty, pretty accurate, based on the officer, officer's interactions with the drivers that they stopped.
You, you think that the?
The, the, what the officer's provided is accurate.
Oh, I see.
Now, what, what, what she's describing with the traffic surveyors, that's another story.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I guess that was what, where I was going with my question, was more about the traffic surveyor as opposed to the data that we're getting from our police department. But, yeah, seems a little.
We had a lot of questions.
Yeah.
Have, have we looked at the data? You could look at it as a population as a whole, and exclude stops for non-residents, you know, and just look at all your stops. You know the demogra- I think we know the demographics of our community.
Yeah.
Have we done that analysis?
No, that's not the method that the.
That they recommended.
That this consultant uses. But there are other, Iowa City's changed to a different consultant that does use more demographic information than, than this one does. So I think there are other alternatives to look at and methods.
Can you explain the purpose of this traffic surveyor? What is the purpose of what they do?
I think he was hired by the city to determine if discrimination was happening during traffic stops.
Yeah, and we, so this was part of, so I suppose, you know, Royce, you served on the board, so you have good background. So this was something we started back in two thousand and twenty, and when there was a lot of conversation about, you know, bias in law enforcement, and so we wanted to, you know, create a mechanism that would create some communication between community members and law enforcement. Also, just monitoring and, and kind of keeping an eye on what's happening out there, and just making sure that our officers are doing, you know, their best job to treat people fairly. And it's just a mechanism for oversight, as Kathy mentioned. Also, the recommendations of additional trainings. And I think one of the biggest things that's been valuable is that we're talking about this. You know, it's, we're looking at it, we're not pretending like there's no issues or anything like that. And honestly, this is still in the monitor category. This is not, what was the third category you mentioned, Kathy?
So benign is the lowest, monitor is the middle, concerning is the big red flag.
And so we're still in the monitor.
Can always do better.
Yeah, and so that, that's, you know, it, it's just, I agree, like, there's always ways you can improve. There's, you know, it's, it's just taking a look at what's happening and just making sure that we're aware of it and that we can address any issues before they become concerning. I think that's a big thing for me as well, is, you know, getting in front of it, looking at it, just kind of trying to figure out, okay, you know, what can we do? What are some ways that we can improve, and, and are there other issues at play? And I think, you know, I think that's great. I think it builds that trust and transparency with the community, and I think it also is, is good for our officers as well. Because as we've, you know, there's some things we obviously need to look at, but there's also a lot of really positive stuff in there, too. And again, we are not in a concerning area right now, we're in a monitor spot, and I think it's great that you flagged it so that we can address it before a larger problem potentially arises. Yeah, so can we talk a little bit about that? Well, we're, you're, the board is going to recommend some more training, some additional bias training?
So yes, Amy has been sending chief some training opportunities, unconscious bias training, things like that, cultural humility training. So I don't know if anything's in the works right now, but she is on top of that.
But as a part of the board, and is, that is one of the things that the board is charged with.
We recommend training to the police department, correct?
Exactly.
Yes, based on observations from this traffic stop data.
Right, right. Yeah, and I do think it would be a good idea to take a look at switching and doing the U. I. I believe this is through the, it's through the university, right? Yeah, maybe making that change, just so that.
I think someone that's more familiar with Corvile and our community would make better choices about intersections to observe.
And they collect it differently, too.
I'm sure they do.
Like you said, they, I, I didn't, we just.
Yeah, they collect it differently. The consultant that does it for the university also said that in Corvile's case, they would not recommend doing it every year, because we don't have enough stops to make it statistically valid. And they said, in, you know, four thousand sounds like a lot, they said, in their world, that's not enough to really have a statistically valid study. So that they would aggregate data over two to three years to make those recommendations.
So I've known a lot of police officers, law enforcement, over, in my lifetime. There's typically never, I mean, they don't just make traffic stops for the fun of it. There's got to be a reason, a triggering reason to make a traffic stop of some sort. And what I'm, what I've heard from your statistics, if, there's a pretty low number of citations issued compared to the number of traffic stops.
Correct.
That tells me our officers are doing a great job with having an education opportunity rather than an enforcement opportunity. So my hat's off to them, congratulations, thank you.
Absolutely, I'd, I'd back that up, Rich. I did learn a lot from, you know, my short time on there, and we were studying the data from twenty-one, I think, when I come on the board.
Yeah.
And then the twenty-two data was just coming in right when I got elected. So I had the opportunity to have one meeting to look at that data. But what I did pull away from that is, you know, our officers do a great job. And I think that, you know, hats off to Corvile as far as, you know, how many, how many people do not get citations. I, I was just on, had the opportunity to sit on a jury duty, jury duty for the Johnson County, and it was a traffic stop in Corvile, is what I was actually sitting on a jury duty for. And the officer.
Wasn't my case.
The officer, that, that officer was so accommodating and nice to the person that they pulled over. I was proud when I watched the body cam and the, the dash cam footage of how well our officers act in this city. And, you know, the fact that, you know, that, that our carnivals and our Fourth of July stuff hasn't had big issues and stuff like that, where they have in other communities around us. I would agree with you on, on how well our officers do.
It's also a great opportunity, tremendous opportunity, educational opportunity. If, if anyone gets a chance to ride along, ride along with law enforcement, find out exactly what they, what they do and what they encounter.
Kathy, did you do it right?
I did, it's like being with a social worker for twenty-four hours. They, I could not do the job, like, it's, it takes a special person to do that job, yeah.
Well, I think the biggest thing is that, you know, we're still, like I said, monitor phase, and we are going to be, the board is going to work on some training suggestions as part of the scope of your duties. I really appreciate you just, you know, offering to, to talk about it and to, you know, because it's, we can always improve. And that, that's good for everybody. That's good for everybody, you know, looking at where you can get better, where you can, you know, what are some adjustments that can be made? You know, I think is really, really important, so. All right, any other final questions?
Yeah, I do, I do have some comment, actually. First of all, you know, comments to our officer for taking the training seriously when the board recommend. And I do appreciate that the board recommend, you know, unbiased training, I think those are very important. But I do want to point out that, looking at the demographic of the city of Corvile, and basing on the percentage fact that you just presented, Kathy, thirty percent of the, like, the traffic stop, there's thirty percent of people of color are more likely to get a citation at no traffic stop, whereas forty percent of the Caucasian are more likely not.
To get a warning.
Just to get a warning.
Correct.
Correct. And so looking at the, the demographic of our city, that's still a very disproportional number.
Right, which is why we want to have a conversation, yes.
Yes, and so moderate, it's, it's, it's good right now.
Right.
But we can do better.
Of course.
And so I hope that each officer will take the opportunity to go to the training that is recommended by the board, and as a city, we can do better when it come to those percentage and even that.
I think just being aware of the present, percentage is like eye-opening, and it can start a conversation. I mean, I feel like starting a conversation with people in our community, between police officers and everyone, I think that's a great start.
Yes, and I think that's also helped in the relationship, well, the relationship between officer and also just regular people in the community as well, because we do want to take away that fear of regular people when it comes to the interaction with our police officer. There shouldn't be a fear when you mention police.
Correct.
Hopefully, we will arrive there sometime.
With all due respect, it is, law enforcement focuses on the issue at hand, not, it's not a race issue.
Oh, not, wow.
They deal with the issue at hand and whether there's a, their, their job is to enforce the law not to have a race issue involved. And that's too oftentimes, in my opinion, race is brought into these, into these conversations, and I think it's inappropriate, to be honest with you.
Well, I would just say that historically, there is well documented that in many places, there is some, you know, unfortunately, some disproportionate policing that happens, and we want to make sure that that does not happen here. And that is a fact, that is a fact. Not here, not every officer, but that is something that people need to be aware of and that we need to make sure is not happening here. I think if, you know, I would agree, it should be as simple as if you're breaking the law, you get caught. But there are a lot of deep systemic issues that have gone into creating this system that we all live under. And I think what we're trying to do is just make sure that we are doing the best that we can and that we are not ignoring, there is racial profiling that does happen in law enforcement. I'm not saying it happens here, you know, we have a, we have an issue we need to look at, we need to examine before it gets worse. Or, and it, I'm not saying it would necessarily, but it's something we need to address, you know. And why, I, my hope is that we can get to a place where we don't have to have these conversations. And it's just, again, it's good transparency. I think that talking about it, looking at it, addressing it, asking questions, does not mean we do not support law enforcement. It means that we want our law enforcement to be the best that it can be.
To have the right tools, so that they can do their job better.
Yeah, and that's good for everyone, that's good for everyone.
And I mean, with all due respect, as a white male, you're not going to experience discrimination. So you can't walk in the shoes of people that, you know, have.
If I broke the law, I would expect, I would expect.
I, but that's not what I'm saying, I'm saying you don't understand discrimination as a white male.
Yeah, I mean, there's more good to work with than, you know, that, to your point about, yeah, it's in the, in the monitor column, but that's what we're doing, we're monitoring it. We're looking at it, we're talking, you know, and pretending that there's no problem is not gonna create a better outcome.
Yeah, I just don't think we know if we have a problem or not.
Which is why we're studying it.
Yeah, well, we're trying to, but, but I think we can all agree, if everything else is equal, whether you get a ticket or not should be independent of, of your race, of course, color of your skin and all that. Everything else being equal, but, but in society, we know that everything else is not equal. I mean, if you're impoverished, you're less likely to have your license, or you're less likely to, you know, keep, keep up with your, with your registration on your car.
And you can't afford insurance.
Fix, fix your taillight, because you can't, you know, there's a strong link between poverty and, and, and tickets. So, and there's a link between race and poverty, of course, in our country, which, you know, we can't fix, but, but we can try to adjust. So I'm just not confident that this data tells us if we have a problem or not. It's something we're monitoring, we certainly, you know, are, you know, I don't know if we can try to adjust to that. If everything else is equal, are we treating non-whites and whites the same? I don't know how we can get at that.
I mean, this study is a statistical analysis of disproportionate traffic stops. So I'm confident that the, the man who did the study is former law enforcement, so, I mean, I'm sure the study was well designed.
Yeah, but, but.
To account for, you know, other things.
Yeah, I don't know if he can account for, for all those other things that we just mentioned.
Well, I didn't design the study, but, you know.
But the conversation is the important part, looking at it, figuring out what we can do, and getting better, you know, getting even better, so.
I'm just glad that we are having this conversation, because four years ago, it was, it was, it was not, and so.
We weren't even tracking this four years ago.
So it's good to have conversation like this, it's just not an easy conversation, obviously, there's a lot of uncomfortable feeling in this room, but it's good that we have this kind of conversation, so.
Yeah, and I really appreciate that Kathy, you know, reached out and, and I don't have any problem looking at ways that we can improve. I think that is a good thing, and that benefits everyone, including our officers, so.
Yeah.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, and please keep, Kathy comes back quarterly for updates. She, they, she gives them during community comment. So the next time, we would love to hear about some of the trainings that were recommended and next steps, so, thank you. All right, moving on to the next agenda item. We have disposal of city property. So Iowa Valley Habitat for Humanity will purchase the property at seven oh eight Ninth Avenue, and they will construct a single-family house on that lot within eighteen months, and that will be restricted to an owner-occupied housing for twenty years. Could I have the resolution, please?
Resolution of intent to dispose of an interest in real property, that property generally referred to as seven oh eight Ninth Avenue, Corvile, Iowa, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Vogelzang, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Knutson. Any questions or comments on this? I was actually wondering, how many Habitat houses have we done?
I don't know, it'd be a guess, it's, we could figure it out, but somewhere around twelve to fourteen.
Yeah, kind of all throughout, yeah.
Do we know when this will start the construction?
They, they're required to have, to build it within eighteen months. They had, previously, we'd talked about this lot, and they were thinking longer in the future, but they came back to us, so. When I get a, I'll give you an update if we get a, get a better understanding when they're going to start.
Thank you.
How did we acquire this property?
This property had, was, people were not living in it, and there were, there were nuisance, or items for the property. They, there were vermin going in and out of the house, so it was a, we, we did a, we did a negotiated sale for the property with the owners who were not living there.
Oh, so we bought it from them?
Yep.
And then tore it down?
Yes.
Are we recouping anywhere near our cost?
No.
No.
No, but you're getting, you are going to get a, you took care of a problem house in an older neighborhood, and you're going to have a brand-new house near the school there, so, well, dollar for dollar, I think it's a good trade to have a house there.
I agree.
It's a good program.
The neighbors, the neighbors looked at a couple of times trying to buy the vacant lot, and we really wanted to make sure there was a house built on the lot.
It's a decent lot.
It is, it is a good lot.
Yeah, I just drove by it the other day, and I was, I noticed it was an empty lot that had been leveled off. Just curious, that's, that's kind of funny, because I was questioning that just two days ago, and then all of a sudden, here we go, but.
Yeah, I think if we have more opportunity to work with. Yeah. I think if we have more opportunity to work with Habitat for Humanity, you know, we should.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Excellent. All right. Any other questions or comments? Okay, could I get the roll call, please?
Councilmember Quinn?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Vogelzang?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Next item, single-stream recycling. So for this, we need to amend Chapter 105 of our Code of Ordinances, and we're gonna collapse the second and third reading of this, so that we can start the highly anticipated single-stream recycling program. Okay. So let's start with the second consideration of the ordinance.
Ordinance number 2024-1002, an ordinance amending the City of Corleville Code of Ordinances 2011 as previously amended regarding a single-stream recycling for, uh, second consideration introduction by Councilmember Quinn, seconded.
Second.
Seconded by Peterson. Any questions or discussion? All right. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Vogelzang?
Aye.
Quinn?
Aye.
The ordinance passes its second consideration, all ayes. And then I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules and collapse the second and third reading of the ordinance.
So move.
Moved by Quinn. Could I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vogelzang. All in favor, please say.
That has to be a roll call.
Oh, does? Okay.
We haven't had many of these.
Okay. I know, usually you tell me it's just a voice vote.
This is just a special rule for this type of.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good to know. So could I get the roll?
You have to actually have a four, a four out of five vote, a su- three-quarters vote to have this work, so.
Okay.
To a senior analyst.
Councilmember Knutson? Yeah, you do.
Just think about all those people that really want that single-stream recycling.
Thank car, man.
You voted yes, correct?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay.
Vogelzang?
Aye.
Quinn?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
The motion is approved, and we will go to the third and final reading of the ordinance.
Ordinance number 2024-1002, an ordinance amending the City of Corleville Code of Ordinances 2011 as previously amended regarding single-stream recycling, introduced for third and final consideration by Councilmember Peterson, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Knutson. Any final questions or comments?
When are we allowed to collapse?
You can, you have the, the, the council has the right to do that at any time. I, in the past, the councils, unless there's really a reason to do it, you try to do it over three readings, so, you know, and the public had a comment or question or anything like that, they'd have the longest time possible, six weeks to, six or seven weeks, depending on the, to, uh, make any comments. This is where she's doing this to make sure we get it done before that.
Of course.
Before that, but.
So any ordinance, it doesn't have anything to do with the ordinance. So could we go from one to, one to three all at once?
You can do all three in the, in one night. We've done that maybe one or two times since I've been here.
I just want to know the rules. Okay.
Yeah, and usually, it's usually time-sensitive, so like this one, you know, we want to get the program going quickly.
Sometimes developers ask for it when they want to close on, close on a lot or something like that, where they, developers won't close on until they get their rezoning and their site plan approved, which makes perfect sense, so, stuff like that.
Does that take three readings, though?
Every ordinance takes three readings. You just don't.
A site plan is an ordinance?
No, I'm just, I'm just saying you're thirty in there rezoning, so, no.
If you have to rezon- okay. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right.
Sorry.
Okay.
Still learning.
Yeah, it's all right.
Every day's a school day, man.
So, roll call.
Councilmember Quinn?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Vogelzang?
Aye.
Ordinance passes its third and final consideration, all ayes. Next item, geothermal well standards. This is the first reading of an ordinance that would adopt geothermal well standards to protect the city's water supply. Could I have the ordinance read?
Ordinance number 2024-1003, an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Corleville, establishing a geothermal well standards, introduced for adoption, first consideration by Councilmember Knutson, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. Any questions or discussion on this?
I see the memo says twenty feet below the ground surface. I thought Jordan was saying it was the hard rock.
Oh, but, but the, between a major and a minor, a ma- a minor system's twenty foot, less than twenty feet above, a major system would be below, that's, you know.
Okay.
But if Jordan probably has a better explanation, that was.
So basically, this standard specifically is focusing on major systems, um, anything that is shallower than twenty feet.
Jordan, would you mind coming up to the mic, so we want everybody to hear this? Thank you.
Yep. So basically, minor systems is based off of surface level, so twenty feet or shallower is a minor system. So that's gonna be like your residential horizontal systems, things like that. This focus is specifically the systems that are deep enough that can actually reach the water we're pulling from this slurryn aquifer.
Any other questions? Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Vogelzang?
Aye.
Quinn?
Aye.
Resolution, or ordinance passes its first consideration, all ayes. Next item, Fifth Street Water Main Improvements from 2023. This would accept improvements of the water main along Fifth Street between Twentieth Avenue and S.T. Morrison Park. So I will start with the motion. Could I get a motion to approve the pay est- the final pay estimate?
So moved.
Moved by Knutson.
Second.
Seconded by Vogelzang. Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries. Now the resolution.
Resolution accepting the Fifth Street Water Main Improvements 2023 as completed, introduced for adoption by Vogelzang, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. Any questions or comments? All right. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Knutson?
Aye.
Vogelzang?
Aye.
Quinn?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Number twelve, well sixteen improvements. This agreement is for the design permitting and construction administration services to construct a new cerulean drinking water well located south of Oakdale Boulevard and east of Timber Lane. Could I have the resolution read?
Resolution approving an engineering services agreement with the Instron Kim for well sixteen improvements, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Quinn, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Peterson. Questions or comments on this?
Is this, is this the same le- depth that we did a year or so ago that we, was dry, or is this deeper?
No, that, you're talking about the shallow well.
Yeah, we did.
By Twentieth Avenue, and that didn't pan out.
That didn't pan out. This is deeper than that.
Yeah.
More confident that it'll pan out. Good.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Vogelzang?
Aye.
Quinn?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Next item, sanitary sewer acoustic assessment and manhole inspection. This assessment deter- will determine which sanitary sewer lines are functional and which ones need work. And this will also allow the city to use a condition-based maintenance strategy at a lower cost compared to traditional methods. Could I have the resolution?
Resolution accepting quotation and awarding a contract with InfoSense Inc. for sanitary acoustic assessment and manhole inspection, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Peterson, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. Questions or comments?
I have one comment. I, I'm, I'm sorry, just because I'm in construction, and when I hear acoustics. So, so, I'm, I'm curious as, as far as, are they testing the viability of the, the manhole by sound? Okay. All right. I, I was trying to wrap my head around that. I'm like, okay, interesting.
It's probably like ultrasound.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Except for dirt.
Any other questions? All right. Roll call.
Councilmember Quinn?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Vogelzang?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Next item, amendment to qualified management agreement. This amendment is for a temporary reduction in the management fee owed to Marcus Hotels and Resorts. Could I have the resolution?
Resolution approving an amendment to that certain qualified management agreement with Marcus Hotels and Resorts LLC for the Hyatt Regency Corleville, uh, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Knutson, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Vogelzang. Questions or comments?
We brought this on.
We had a couple of issues at the hotel that we thought the management team could do better on, and they agreed and, um, agreed to take a reduction.
Didn't have to do with occupancy?
No.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right. Roll call.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Vogelzang?
Aye.
Quinn?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Next item, mobility, mobility coordinator 2080 agreement. This agreement is for the City of Corleville's share of the full-time Johnson County Mobility Coordinator position for one year. Could I have the resolution read, please?
Resolution approving a 2080 agreement with Johnson County regarding a mobility coordinator position, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Vogelzang, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. Questions or comments? All right. Roll call.
Councilmember Knutson?
Aye.
Vogelzang?
Aye.
Quinn?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes.
Sorry, I just, can I just ask one question?
Sure, sure.
Is this, is it, um, do we need to do this yearly, annually, or just, okay. I thought so, but I just wanted to.
Yeah. No problem, no problem. Okay, let's move on to the consent calendar. Could I get a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented?
Madam Mayor, I would like to ask Council to consider a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented, A to X.
Moved by Quinn. Could I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Peterson. Could I have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Vogelzang?
Aye.
Quinn?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Consent calendar is approved, all ayes.
I'm glad you're back. I, I tried to do this last meeting, and then totally botched it.
All right. City administrators report.
Um, yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, just a couple of things. Um, first, my thoughts are with Councilmember Goodrich on the loss of her mother, and the funeral's tomorrow, and she'll be coming back towards the end of the week. Um, storm debris collection will be continuing through June 5th. We just encourage residents to, um, get them within four-foot lengths if possible, and get it out on the curb, and then, um, we'll get those picked up. It will take several days, because there was more than, um, we thought. So to get through the city, it will take, um, some time, but, um, you don't have to bundle them, you don't have to put stickers on them, just get them out to the curb, so. And finally, Scott, do you want to just update? Because there's a, gonna be another change at the, um, diverging diamond coming up.
Another one? I feel like, yeah, exactly. I think we just did this last time. So today, we, uh, were notified by the Iowa DOT that, uh, late this coming Sunday evening, basically at midnight Sunday, um, rolling into Monday, that will be the closure of the on-ramp to eastbound eighty. So, if you want to go to I-80 eastbound, you will have to detour first west on eighty to Corridge Avenue, and then come back east on the interstate. So, the locals will know the other options, but that will be the official detour.
Yeah.
Is to send folks west on eighty to Corridge, and then back east. So it's just like we did when the westbound on-ramp was closed, and just like with that on-ramp, this on-ramp closure has forty working days. So if you start that count, that countdown from this coming Sunday evening, that would put us, um, forty working days takes us to August 6th. But, um, as we saw with the, the previous ramp, the contractors really got after it, and it didn't take forty working days. So, combination of good weather and as much effort as they're putting in, we would expect it to be, um, a shorter duration. So, look for the press release on this one tomorrow. They're gonna open up any more lanes, are they? Uh, not yet. No, there's still a lot of work going on in all the internal islands that separate traffic. There's a lot of brickwork and, um, concrete work, and eventually landscaping. I will mention, if, if anybody was driving through today, they may have noticed a lot of jackhammering of concrete, which looks really bad, but that was all temporary pavement. So, they're getting rid of some of that now.
I'd encourage people to go out and try the trail and the tunnels, because they're all open now. So, um, you can get from north to south in the permanent, um, trail system. So, um, a lot of fun to utilize those.
Any other questions for Scott? Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it, Mayor.
Excellent. Mayor's report, I really don't have a lot this evening. I just wanted to note that I know at the last meeting, I mentioned that I would be reading the AAPI month proclamation, but I actually was able to read it at the event instead, and it ended up working out really, really well. And I will let my colleague say more about the amazing, uh, event, uh, Asian Fest that happened a couple of weeks ago, and second, second year, and again, another fantastic event. So congratulations to you and your team on that. And that's all I have. A city attorney's report?
I have nothing additional.
Nothing.
All right. Excellent. Uh, committee and council members' report will start down at this end with Councilmember Knutson.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I just want to reiterate, that trail, First Avenue Trail, with the long tunnel is awesome. Used it a few times already, a- and there's no steep hill either. It's even a little bit easier to get up. It's really, really gradual. I don't even have to use my battery, so I love it. That's all I have.
Excellent. Great. Councilmember Vogelzang?
I also want to just, uh, send condolences to Laurie Goodrich and her family, lost her mother. Condolences. I also want to compliment, um, all those that were, and contributed, um, to the Correville connection. It's always, uh, it's always a real joy to read it. It's, uh, tremendous amount of, great information, uh, in that publication. Also talked, probably pretty timely article about yard waste and brush trim. Uh, I know our neighborhood got, uh, pretty much every house on our street has got limbs out in front. Well, quite a bit of storm damage, but to my knowledge, no one got hurt, so, um, that, that's a good thing. And our hearts go out to those that are suffering down in Greenfield and other areas that, uh, get suffered by, um, are impacted by storms. Was fortunate to attend the, uh, Parks and Rec meeting, commission meeting last, uh, last week, last Monday. We got a preview of some of the concepts of the rec center in both new construction and also some, um, some rehab's, uh, concepts, so, as I understand, there'll be a public hearing.
Open house.
At our next, uh, at our next council meeting on June 11th, right?
Yep. So we encourage people to come, starting at four-thirty that day, um, till six. It's just an open house. Come look at the plans, give everyone comments. So encourage anyone, um, to come to that, because, um, this is kind of the final stages of that whole process.
And finally, it was, um, it was a great honor for me to be able to be asked to, uh, talk at the Memorial Day Ceremony at Oak Hill Cemetery yesterday. I was, uh, I was very humbled. Uh, it was, it was a great honor. Afterwards, um, a couple came up to me and suggested that, um, it would be a great idea if we could display flags, like, over the overpass on Twelfth Avenue as an example. Um, I don't know if, traveling around the country, those that you've, I know down in Columbus, Ohio, I've seen it a couple of other places, where over the overpasses, they have bunting or flags, uh, displayed. And it really is a tremendous, tremendous, uh, impact, uh, and very, very patriotic. And so I thought it was a great, it was a great suggestion. I know the, the pedestrian cages, protection over Twelfth Avenue might, uh, create a bit of a problem, but I think it's something to maybe consider for, uh, Fourth of July, and for Memorial Day, and Labor Day, or whatever, um, something to think about, so. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Councilmember Quinn?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Couple of weeks ago, I think two Saturday ago, we, we hosted, right in the heart of Corleville, the Second Annual Corleville Asian Festival, and it was widely successful. So thank you to the city for their support, and thank you to all of the partner organization, the volunteer, the performer, the vendors, the speakers that came and made the event the way, the way that it, it was, and hopefully, we'll be able to continue to grow the event even bigger as years to come. And if you hadn't had a chance to, to experience it, I would encourage you to come out next year, in, in whichever way that you can support us, whether as a festival goer, or, you know, give up a couple of hour in your time to help us set up and tear down, whatever that may be, or just come and enjoy some food and some entertainment. I would highly encourage you to do that. And thank you, Mayor, for that proclamation. Yeah, it, it was just great to see the community come together, and everybody was having a great time, and there was some, you know, some educational thing that happening that was good to see as well. So, thank you. Congratulations to Eric and all the staff who make the dream come true for single-stream recycling. I know that was, you know, the anticipation has been long, and it's finally here. May 31st is actually the day that you can actually use your new container. So, yay. If you have old container, I think you can return them to City Hall, or just leave them out on the curb, and the crew will pick them up. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
The first week.
The first, only the first week. And so, if you miss the first week, I guess bring them to City Hall still.
Or you can keep them.
Or you can keep them for, not for yard waste, though, right?
No, keep them for your own storage, or something like that.
Well, the best place to take them, if you don't put back that week, is to take it to the drive-in recycling center.
Perfect, thank you. Summer is around the corner, so the kids have a week and a half to go for summer, so that mean that the summer lunch program at the food pantry will begin soon. It will take place on June 11th, all the ways until August 31st, and, no, not August 31st, sorry, August 16th, I was looking at July. And it's begin at 11:30, and lunch will be serving until 1 o'clock, and beside lunch, there will be activities that local organization and entity provide. Anyone who are eighteen and under can eat with us for free. However, if you are the caretaker, we encourage to come and eat with us as well, because the pantry will be preparing some food on the side to feed the adults. On month, from Tuesday to Thursday, we partner with the school district to provide lunch for the kids, and so those lunch are only for kids eighteen and under, but adult will get something else to eat. Yeah, so we encourage you to come out, bring your kids, enjoy some good food and some great activity that, you know, the rec center will be providing, the Correville Public Library, Johnson County Conservation, Bike Library, Antelope Landing Library, and there's a lot of new restaurant that you can get a chance to try at these lunches as well. And I know that the fire department is also coming by, too, so lots and lots of fun activities. That's all I have.
Excellent, thank you. And Councilmember Peterson?
Yeah, I don't have a whole lot, but I think it would, I'd be reminisce not to give my condolences to everybody, just like Mr. Vogel Zhang did in Greenville, and then also to Lori Goodrich's family. Thoughts are with her as well, by, at the loss of her mother. I also would like to talk about how fast our city manager is on, on answering questions as far as the tree issue. I, I'm amazed at how fast that happened, but I called, and I, and then I opened my email when I got out of my truck, and you'd already posted an hour before I called you about putting the limbs and stuff out by the roadside, so if I'd have read my email a little sooner, I wouldn't have to call you. But also, I attended Memorial Day festivities yesterday at, at the cemetery, which, great job. You did an awesome job up there, and been attending that every year. I think it, I'm amazed at how many veterans that have served and passed away that are involved in our community. That list just keeps getting longer and longer, but, but very proud of that, and, and I thought you did a great job up there. And I was really excited to see the new recycle bin in my driveway the other day. I was like a little kid at Christmas time, went out there, almost filled it up, and then rearranged my whole garage when I got rid of the tub, so. But yeah, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I did want to mention, don't forget to vote for the primary elections that are coming up, for our county supervisors.
Excellent.
June 4th.
June 4th, yep, week from today. All right.